Good evening, the city of Boston zoning board of appeal hearing for December seventh, two thousand and twenty-three is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings until March two thousand and twenty-five. This hearing of the board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. This hearing is also being recorded. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through the telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter their virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists, and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the board. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project. That is those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select yes, and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first and then provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Stembridge reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called called or the meeting host will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. Okay, Mr. Stembridge.
Evening, Madam Chair President.
Good evening, Ms. Weewell.
Good evening, Madam Chair President.
Good evening, I will turn it over to Mr. Stembridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To begin the hearing scheduled for five P M. today. The first case, the first two are companion cases. First being case B O A one, five, three, zero, five, seven, one, with the address of six sixty-five Boylston Street. Along with that, we have case B O A one, five, three, zero, five, seven, six, with the same address of six sixty-five Boylston Street. If the applicant and or their representative is present, they can explain the appeal to the board.
Yes, President, Mr. Stembridge, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dennis Quilty, attorney at twenty-eight State representing the applicant before you this evening for relief. I am joined by the owner of the business, Mr. Yasuki Tanaka, and his attorney, Raikai Nafayama. This is a matter which concerns replacing a, an existing restaurant on Boylston Street. This is between the blocks Dartmouth to Exeter, almost across the street from the main branch of the Boston Public Library. There are a number of restaurants in this area. One was Be Good. That restaurant closed, and it is that site which this operator seeks to take over. When Be Good was granted zoning relief a couple of years back, it was granted, quote, "to this petitioner only", which of course requires us to come in as a new user to be recognized, if you will, as the operator at that site. So, one of, one of the, one of the appeals is, is for that purpose, which is the one, five, three, zero, five, seven, one. The second, as, as one, five, three, zero, five, seven, six, is an extension of non-conforming use, and the extension concerns the addition of three seats on the patio. There were thirteen seats approved on the patio in the earlier go-around, if you will, and the application before you today seeks sixteen seats on the patio. And those are the two issues. We have conducted a great deal of outreach in the community. We've met with the Neighborhood Association of the Back Bay and are in receipt of their letter of non-opposition. In addition to that, we held a mayor's office of neighborhood services, a butters meeting onsite, and that went very, very smoothly as well. We're unaware of any opposition as we appear before you today, and we are hopeful to move this forward, and we're certainly happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, hello, Madam Chair, members of the board, Maggie Van Scoy with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, our office would like to defer to the judgment of the board. As stated, we held in a butters meeting for this application. There were no abutters or attendees present. Application has been in touch with the Neighborhood Association of Black Bay, who is in non-opposition to this proposal, and our office is unaware of any concerns at this time. Thank you.
Thanks, Maggie.
Any other raised hands?
I don't see no additional raised hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you, hearing none, may I have a motion?
I'll put forth a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries, good luck.
Thank you very much, thank you, members.
Next, we have case B O A one, two, six, seven, three, seven, five, three, six, I think, with the address of twenty-six Spring Garden Street. Is the applicant and or their resident, their representative present to explain the appeal to the board?
Yes, I'm here, I'm the homeowner.
Please proceed, sir.
Okay. My name is Kyle Keen. I have a degenerative eye condition, and when I moved into the house, it wasn't such a big deal that we didn't have dedicated parking. But over the course of the last few years, my vision has deteriorated significantly, and I'm hoping to do a curb cut and a parking spot in place of my small yard. Sorry, this all gets very emotional for me. I don't know if there's more detail I can provide, I'm happy to, but that's the gist of it. I would like to do a curb cut on a side of the street where there's no existing parking, so it wouldn't be removing any spots, and then it would allow my wife to park so that I could help carry in groceries and participate more, and it won't be so hard for her to get me back and forth from the house.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
I have a question, Madam Chair, and this is from Mr. Salas, if he's on the call. Is there? You, I, okay.
Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
Is there anything to consider here in terms of reasonable accommodation? Has the applicant, you know, requested that? I'm not sure how it works here in Boston, but I know other communities, things can be considered under a reasonable accommodation.
You, you're talking about under ADA?
Yes, I believe so.
In terms of zoning, I'm not a hundred percent sure. It's how they're just looking for is to add the driveway. I don't know what more in terms of an accommodation are you seeking for? But they can always reach out to the the disability commission, thank you, Board Member Stembridge, to discuss that.
Are you asking, are you asking as this being the accommodation, is that your question?
I, you know, I think in other communities, there's a path for, you know, a variance that sort of changes the threshold of review, and it, you know, has to do with, I think, you know, issue, mobility issues, I think, vision impairment issues, but I believe the applicant would have needed to sort of apply under that threshold. I don't know if there is sort of a similar process here as other communities just handle it differently.
And I, I can say I did ask around and didn't get, they, they sort of told me just to let the zoning board know that this was a request for reasonable accommodation, and I did provide medical support letter for my orientation and mobility. It was the woman who's been coming out and training me to get around the neighborhood and help me get back and forth to work. So there is some documentation around that, but I, I wasn't told that there was any other process that I should follow.
Norm, do you want to read B T D.'s recommendation into the record?
From Boston Transportation Department, the vehicle should can be moved up three feet to avoid front yard parking. B T D usually does not approve a curb cut for one vehicle, but since there is no parking on this side of the street, it works well.
Can I ask whether, whether you've applied for, like, a handicap parking? Like, I don't know what they're called, pass or, or, you know, placard or plate?
Yeah, yeah.
Helpful?
Yeah, I'm a registered, like, I'm registered with the Massachusetts Commission for the Blind. I have a disabled parking pass. Somebody suggested that I consider trying to get a disabled parking spot on the street, but that wouldn't be a dedicated access for me and my wife. And so there's other, you know, we have some lovely neighbors who are very elderly, who also have disabled placards who may use that spot.
Because they also don't have driveways?
Yeah, or they have multiple cars.
Okay. Uh, uh, you know, I, I, I'm bringing that up, I, I think, because the, the challenge that we struggle with, or I struggle with, is the balance of your need versus, you know, the curb cut's gonna stay when, when you're no longer there, and so we've then approved, you know, another curb cut. So I'll just put that out there. Are there other questions from the board? May we have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information, the community process. Our office hosted a butters meeting on May fourth. There were several butters who, who expressed concerns with this proposal, citing concerns about fire safety and character of the neighborhood. The applicant did go on to meet with the Columbia Savin Hill Civic Group, which voted to support this proposal. I believe you have that letter on file. And then we further received two letters in opposition from, I guess, community members. With that information, we'll defer to the board, thank you.
Can the applicant speak to whether, you know, how, how prevalent are existing driveways in your vicinity versus, you know, who's, who's kind of fighting for on-street parking? It looks like there's on-street parking on one side of your street?
Yeah, there's on-street parking on one side of the street. And most other houses have a driveway, but we frequently end up parking like a twenty-minute walk back to the house, because this is a really small neighborhood between Dot Ave and the train line, so it ends up just getting incredibly busy, especially during the street sweeping.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I think Nancy.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, if there's other public testimony.
Hi, good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, good evening, Madam Chair, board members. I, my name is Nancy Baker, I'm owner of twenty-eight Spring Garden Street, directly abutting number twenty-six. I have strong opposition to this proposed cut. I think it would be a better idea to apply for a handicap plaque spot. I've been on this street thirty-one years, and I personally can't think of any neighbors that also have a handicap plaque. I don't think that that would be an issue for Kyle to have access, full access to that spot anytime needed. I also would think that accessibility is an issue on Spring Garden Street. It probably is also going to be an issue on any other street or parking lot in the city, which is again probably a good reason to have a handicap spot. So everywhere you go, you have good accessibility from a vehicle. I also just, I lived at twenty-four prior to moving to twenty-eight. Again, I was a direct abutter, and I know that that front yard space is very, very tight. I, I don't think there's even enough physical space to put a vehicle. Maybe if a fence came down and Kyle's vehicle encroached a bit onto that legal easement that number twenty-four has. Again, I, I used to own twenty-four, so I know this. Maybe it would work, but again, that's getting into the legality of encroaching on a legal easement. So, lack of physical space, number one, but I do think that a handicap plaque for the street space should be strongly considered over this. Like Madam said, the day that Kyle might not be there anymore moves, sells, you know, that remains, and again, where do you draw the line on who gets a cut? You know, there's people all throughout the city that could benefit from something like this, but this is why we have zoning in place for these types of things, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other raised hands?
Yes, one more raise here, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ren.
I, I just wanted to express support for the curb cut, because someone is living here, and it's, it's, you know, there, there's enough room, I believe that there were measures taken, and this has to do with someone's, you know, ability to, to live, to ability to get around and be a part of the community, and it's a vital part of public health care to have this available.
Thank you, can you identify yourself and just your address for the record?
Hi, sorry, I'm Ren.
And where do, what is your address?
Yes, twenty-five William Morrissey Boulevard.
Thank you. Any other raised hands, Stephanie?
No additional raise hand, Madam Chair.
Okay. With that, if there are no other questions from the board, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'm gonna make a motion of approval. I, I don't typically like parking in the front setback, but I think this will help, you know, this individual, you know, access his home. And I'm looking around the context of the neighborhood on Google Maps, and I, I see quite a few driveways along Spring Garden with parking. So it's not like there's, it's not like the context isn't there for this, so I'm gonna move approval for those reasons.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you all.
The next case is case B O A one, five, two, four, seven, four, one, with the address of six Sunny Bank Road. Is the applicant and or their representative present to explain to the board?
Yes, I'm here, hi, everyone. Madam Chair and board members, I am Alex Lissack, I'm the homeowner at six Sunny Bank. We are looking to upgrade our existing attic, which is currently unfinished, to add a bedroom and a bathroom using the existing walk-up stair that is there. There's not gonna be any change to the envelope of the house on the exterior. The, the one, the two changes that you would see from the exterior of the house are adding two skylights to the rear roof. And then on one side of the house, there is, there's one window currently there in the attic, and that window would be sliding a few feet over, and then adding a small window next to it, which would be in the bathroom in the attic. We're doing this to increase, our daughter's bedroom right now is very small, so we're trying to increase the size of her bedroom and that we can use her current sort of walk-through bedroom as an office, as both my wife and I, you know, work hybridly from home a good amount of the time. The, the relief that we're asking for, the house currently is already over the floor area ratio, it's currently point four-two, and this proposed finishing of the attic would bring us an increase of nine percent to point five, a ratio of point five-one.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Mayor's Office like to defer to the board at this time. Some background information, we had the applicant send out flyers to a butters. They also went on to the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council, where it was approved unanimously by them. With that, we'll defer to the board, thank you.
Thank you. Any other raised hands?
No additional raise hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you, with that, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve, motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries, good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case B O A one, five, two, eight, two, six, six, with the address of one, twelve Temple Street. Is the applicant and or their representative present to explain to the board?
Yes.
Please proceed.
So, one, twelve Temple Street is an existing house in Route nineteen-ten. Our proposal is to remove an existing sort of three-seasons room on the back and replace it with a slightly larger addition that contains a great room and a full bathroom. Currently, the only bathroom in the house is on the second floor. So this plan basically is just making the place much more livable for rice, living in place. If you see the plan on the left, there's an existing bump out on the back that we're removing and then replacing it, and the plan on the right with one just like about eight feet larger in every dimension. So it's a minor change, but since the existing building is only five feet from the property line, we're infringing upon the, the side yard setback. So we basically just need relief from the side yard setback to build this addition in the backyard.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Excuse me, Madam Chair, could the speaker identify themselves?
Sorry, I am Josh Smith, I'm the project architect on this project from Zever Architects.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. We had the applicant do in a butters meeting, there were no concerns raised by neighbors. They went on to the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council, which voted unanimously to support the proposal. With that, we'll defer to the board, thank you.
Thank you. Any other raised hands?
No additional raise hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you, with that, may I have a motion?
I will put forward a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries, good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case B O A one, five, one, six, two, zero, six, with the address of forty-one Coolidge Road. Is the applicant and or their representative present to explain to the board?
Yes.
Please identify yourself and proceed.
Yes, hello, my name's Steve Brickman, forty-one Coolidge Road in Alston, and I'm just looking to add a driveway to the side of my home.
So what's there now? No, do you have a, is there an existing curb cut, is there?
No, there's, there's no driveway, there's no curb cut. This is what I'm hoping to do. Pretty much every house on the street has a driveway, this is one that does not. The, I'm moving into the house, I previously had it for tenants, and now I'm gonna be living there myself, and I'm asking for a driveway for my own personal use. I'll actually be taking cars off the street because it's, it was a four-bedroom unit, and with everybody with a car, it'll actually be fewer cars on the street, I'll be reducing congestion.
What's the on-street situ, uh, uh, situation, on-street parking situation right now? Is there parking on both sides, is it residential parking, what is it?
It's residential parking with a permit.
On both sides?
Correct.
Okay. Other questions from the board?
One question, it appears would the parking be in the front yard? Or what is now the front yard?
Or be on the side of the house.
So do you want to read Mr. D'Amico's comment for the record?
Be with me, please. B T D, Boston Transportation Department, would oppose this plan due to front yard parking. Is what Mr. D'Amico wrote.
Thank you. Other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. I understand we have the applicant circulate flyers to a butters within three hundred feet, and as also, they were in contact with the Alston Civic Association. We're aware of one letter in opposition that we received, and I believe we forwarded that to the board. With that, we'll defer to the board at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Any raised hands?
No additional raise hands, Madam Chair.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
I will make a motion to approve.
Is there a second? Is there another motion?
I'm gonna put forward, that's correct, that was a no. I'm gonna put forward a motion of denial consistent with the B T D recommendation.
Is there a second? Hearing none. I'm gonna guess we are gonna put this at the next full board meeting, is that right, Javier? Is Javier still with us?
Yeah, I apologize, yeah, the, if the board wishes, they can put a motion to defer to, to the full board next Tuesday, so it could be heard then, if, if not, another motion could be made too.
I would make a motion to defer to the full board.
Is there a second? Okay, Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Okay, next, we go on to rediscussion scheduled for five P M. The first is case B O A one, five, one, seven, seven, nine, seven, with the address of forty-six Lingwood Street. Is the applicant and or their representative present to explain the appeals to the board?
I'm, I'm here, and I was hoping my representative, Michael Chavez, would be here.
Yeah, yes, I'm here as well, sorry, everybody. Just got added as a panelist. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Michael Chavez, architect, working with Bob at his, at his home. I live at twenty-six Unhilled Park in Dorchester. The owner, Bob Purninton, is requesting an onsite parking for his home, which he currently does not have. He's currently in his seventies, he's lived in the home for forty-plus years, and his house is essentially on a slope, you know, it's in Roxbury on the slope now. And his challenge is currently being able, he has an electric vehicle and trying to park his vehicle either on the street, he's got a public charging station a few blocks down the street, so it's, you know, charging it down the road, hiking up the hill to get to his house. You know, during snow season, of course, it's hard to find parking, and then, of course, during street cleaning, it's always difficult. He's proposing a driveway that's capable of holding two tandem parking spaces, so that, you know, one curb cut takes away one spot, but we're adding two. Again, he'll have an electric vehicle, which will have a new charging station at his house for him to be able to charge his vehicle, permeable pavers, and the green space that's currently in the front yard is remaining. Currently, there's a sidewalk, kind of a walkway up to his door with a row of, of hedges between him and his neighbor, which he's talked to his neighbor about, and they're okay with him taking those down to have the driveway added to the house. He's been through the community process, he's got support from the neighborhood, very city councilors, and his direct butters are all okay with his proposal for this two-spot driveway. I don't know if Bob, you want to add anything to that? I don't know if Bob, you want to add anything to that, but that's the summary here and it is in considered in the in the front portion of the house, but on that side of the, of the house. Um uh as it stands now.
That's about the story.
So, how far from the uh the cur- the sidewalk is the? Spot? So I know it's technically on the side, but.
The, the, the depth of the driveway, if you're asking, that's about almost twenty-eight feet.
Are there questions from the board? So it appears that there's um parking on both sides of your street, is that correct? And is it um permit parking or is it? Open parking?
There's, there is some parking on both sides. They recently uh that don't allow parking anymore on Lindwood Circle itself. So they've reduced the amount of parking on the circle that's there now. Uh so on his side of the street, there is parking, but on the opposite side where the circle itself is, there is no parking. And most of his neighbors have off-street parking, you know, he's one of the few that does not have a driveway uh for his home.
Yeah, and these are, again, it's not, it's not a resident permit parking or it is?
There, sections of it are, there are sections that are per- Roxbury permit only and there are sections that are two-hour, depending what section of the street you're in. In that area.
Uh uh other questions from the board?
Um I'm sorry, I just thought of one. Um what would the materials be? For the um parking?
Some form of permeable paper, you know, like a permeable brick paper with uh puke zone infill um to allow for stormwater infiltration.
I'm sorry, and you did say, you said there was a charging station nearby, is that the RCC one that you're referring to or where, where you?
Right, right, this way, Bob. Uh yes, the RCC one that's sent down the hill, there's a charging station down there for him, um but again, trying to. Get from there up to the house is not easy in in your seventies and snow and all that good stuff.
Uh any other questions from the board? May I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time the Mayor's office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information on the community process, uh understand that the uh, we had the applicant. Uh distribute a flyer out, um apparently a number of neighbors were very supportive of the proposal. Um and liked that he was gonna be going to get a E V charger, um. He also is in touch with the Highland Park Neighborhood Council, it looks like. I understand they were supportive as well. Uh with that, we'll defer to the board. Thank you. And I'm sorry, he did receive a lot of support from uh councillor Ruth Z as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Um knowing the area somewhat, I would make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I'm struggling with all our curb cut uh scenarios, um. So Katie, you you had uh made a motion on another case that involved E V and. Put a proviso that it remained with this applicant only and uh are you willing to add that proviso?
Yeah, I'm amenable to that, you know, I just wanna say, no.
Oh, actually, sorry, Norm is the one that, sorry. My, my apologies. But Ms. We will was the one who, who had added that proviso in a, in a different situation. Are you, are you amenable to that proviso, Mister Stenbridge? You're on mute?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And uh Ms. We will, would you second that?
Yes.
Okay, Mister Stenbridge.
Yes.
Ms. We will.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you, members of the board. Have a good night.
Thank you.
And next, we have case BOA one four six two nine two four. With the address of twenty-five Burr Street. Is the applicant and or their representative present to explain to the board?
Yes, thank you, Cameron Merrill, uh Marilyn McGary, business address one hundred State Street, present with Kurt Hackinson, the owner of this property. Uh this matter is uh before this board as a rediscussion. Uh as I explained at the, the first hearing originally. This application was proposed with no parking in the existing driveway where the existing curb cut is. I S D had asked the applicant to revise his plans to show parking spaces in the driveway that leads to the two-car garage. So he did. That led to a violation. At the last meeting, uh we had discussed with this board that this project would be better served to indicate. There's no parking in the driveway and only to extend the curb cut on the far-left side of the driveway. So that he can pull forward directly into his garage where there is an E V charger. So as you're looking at this diagram, on the far-left and on the far-right of that driveway are garage openings. So now with that curb cut removed on the left side of this driveway, he can pull his electric vehicle straight through the driveway. Into his garage and charge it without either hopping the curb or doing a kind of zigzag. Uh three-point turn to get into his own garage. Uh again, this is an existing driveway, an existing curb cut. Uh and this proposal is for the sole purpose of being able to drive directly into his garage doors.
So Mister Merrill, I know, I asked this last time, so I'm just gonna ask again for clarification. So are we talking about shifting the? Entire curb cut, like shifting it so that uh it aligns with his space or are you adding more curb cut? Cause I, there is a difference. Uh in other words, are you kind of like restoring? The portion that you no longer need, you know, for the same number of feet that you're then adding in the other spot.
So un- unfortunately, the way that the garages work and there's a, there's a photograph in the plan set, is that the garages are split to the far. Wide areas of this driveway. So unfortunately, we cannot shift it because if we shifted it, we would be blocking the other garage. Frankly, I'm not sure how or why that extension of the curb cut was ever created on Burr Street in the first place. It's extremely unusual. I don't see it really anywhere else in the city. Um and it's fully ADA compliant without it being there. Um so I'm not sure why it's there in the first place. It's a different color concrete on the sidewalk. It looks like it was installed sometime after the original sidewalk. Um so this is just really trying to restore the driveway to what was permitted in nineteen eighty um for this house in the first place.
Yeah, so uh I'm sorry, bear with me, cause I'm, I'm, so I'm looking at the image where I think you're describing where there seems like there's a. A different color uh pavement, right? Uh so, so that to me is not part of the, should not be part of the driveway. That is not for parking, is that correct?
Oh right, that's on the far-right side of the driveway. I'm talking about the complete other side of the driveway.
Right, but I'm asking that because that has a curb cut associated with it, even though it's not. Parking, is that right? I can't tell because there's a car blocking it, but it appears that the curb cut extends to that other colored part of the pavement. You're on mute, sir?
That's blocked, that's blocked by a curb cut.
Okay, so that, that is not, uh okay, blocked by a curb, sorry. That has a curb cut or that does not have a curb cut? That's what I'm asking.
Does not, it is blocked.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And cars do ru- routinely park that far up, so you wouldn't be able to.
So if I may, I have a question. So what we're seeing on this plan, the part that is light gray. Is existing conditions where the curb cuts in? Is that correct?
The hashed gray to the left.
And, and the existing width of the curb cut is twenty feet, is, am I? Am I getting that? Oh no, I think I, I have it up on my, it is twenty feet, I have it separately. So. Do cars currently park in the driveway? Because I don't, I'm kind of having trouble. Seeing the issue that. It, to me, it seems like someone could make that maneuver by turning right and then going to the far. Left driveway and the right, like I'm.
Right, so, so occasionally, if, you know, visitors or, you know, someone may temporarily park in the driveway. Way and Mister Hackinson, who has his hand up and uh help describe better, but e- effectively when you drive down Burr Street. And you're taking a right into the driveway, into the far-left garage, it is a very challenging maneuver for an electric vehicle. Uh to get in there, drive effectively towards the side retaining wall, then back up, then. Kind of come back straight towards the sidewalk and go into the garage straight so that he can charge his vehicle. Probably has to maneuver over the sidewalk as well. Uh so this is safer, it's easier. Um and uh maintains the usability of the driveway and he, I'm sure Mister Hackinson can tell you all about the challenges he has.
Does only the left garage have the E V charger?
They both do. Both, this is a two-unit owner-occupied condominium and both of them have their own E V charger. So Mister Hackinson has one condominium unit, the other unit owner has their own unit and each of them have E V chargers.
Can I ask, um so part of B, part of uh B P D A's recommendation. Uh talks about Public Improvement Commission. Uh where, is, is that a step that you have taken, planned to take, need to take?
We will take it, uh that, this was. A- again, I don't know why they told us to drive the parking spaces onto this driveway in the first place. Um they said we had to come to the Z B A before they would entertain this proposal. Uh before the Z B A though, without parking spaces there, um you know, it, it's all existing except for the curb cut. There's no work being done on this property at all. It's only the curb gun.
Understood. I, I think this, the struggle relates for me, that's why I keep asking you about whether you're shifting or adding is, is that you're adding. You're adding a lot of more curb gut to make this now, I forget, somewhere in the thirty feet range. Uh so I, that's, that's what I'm balancing here. So. I don't know if there are other questions from the board?
Um all parking will be in the garage, garages.
Yes.
Well, except for visitors apparently, so yes and no.
Right.
Uh maybe we have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Uh this time we'd like to defer to the judgment of this board. Uh the applicant met with the J P N C, uh which heard the matter in June and the recommendation uh from that group was to. Support this proposal. Uh with that, we'll defer to the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, the only raise hand we have is from Kurt.
Who is the applicant, correct?
I should say, I think we have about seven or eight letters of support, including from all uh butters. And directly across the street that looks at this.
Thank you. Okay, uh any other questions from the board? May I have a motion?
I will put forward a motion of denial. I think the curb cut at twenty-eight feet is. Still too wide, so I'm not sure if there's further work that could be done in reducing that, but I think twenty-eight feet is too much.
Could, could I just uh ask for a withdrawal as opposed to a denial? I'm, I'm not convinced that this project even needs zoning relief, uh as it's currently.
Yeah, if you want to withdraw, we can definitely, I mean Javier, I assume we can, he can do so.
I think that's fine, I. Uh without parking space, I think you would just need to go to Public Works. Um he can kind of. Take that path of navigation and if he wants to withdraw, he, he can certainly submit that as well.
Okay, well, I think he's just uh requested to do so, correct, Mister Merrill?
Yes, like I said, frankly, I don't think this requires zoning relief, but they're, they wouldn't entertain our application without coming to the board. Um which seemed a little odd to me, but um in some circumstances, it's easier to fulfill their wishes as opposed to fighting with them, so.
Um understood, understood. Uh okay, do we need any other action Javier or are we?
I'll, I would vote on it just, just to be safe, um to be, to be marked as a denial without prejudice, right? So if he does need to come back, he, he can come back within the one year at that point.
Well, if he's withdrawing, then why do we need a motion to, to deny or to approve?
Well, we, we've done in practice when someone's withdrawn and we don't have a written statement yet, so we would just write that up for him. So to make a motion to wa- to approve a withdrawal, so we can have an official decision of that. So previously, someone would have to write a, a request to withdraw, but because he's doing it at the hearing, we don't have that right now.
Understood, okay. All right, so may I have a motion to withdraw? Or to approve the withdrawal?
A motion to approve withdrawal.
May I have a second? Mister Stenbridge.
Yes.
As we will.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck on alternatives. All right. Thank you all and I'll see you on uh Tuesday.